Everybody ready to roll? Maderas, ready to roll? You ready to roll, Maderas?
We lost the solicitor in the...
Well, we don't need the solicitor, by the way.
I think the acting chief...
I think you have him in the other room.
Oh, okay.
I can see the brighter light in the big room. Yeah, I know it.
Hey, Joanne. Hey, Joanne. With a salute to the flag. I pledge...
With complete allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, it's about time, man.
And having recovered from that, will the town clerk kindly call the roll, please?
Yes. Councillor Edwards.
Present.
Councillor Aruda.
Present.
Councillor Maderas.
Here.
Councillor Durfee.
Here.
Councillor Carroll.
Here.
Councillor Costa.
Yep.
And Councillor Bowlin.
Yep.
All present.
Thank you very much. We will now proceed to the swearing-in of several elected officials. It's been a bit delayed. But they are Richard Dodario, who's the judge of probate; the town sergeant, Randy Costa; the Budget Committee members, Alex Cody, Arthur Muller, David Perry, and Daniel Reposa. And would you kindly all come forward, please? Now, this is going to be a little tricky. But since you all occupy different offices in the town, when we get through the swear, affirmation, and oath, the last line reads that you will faithfully discharge the duties of blank. So when we get there, don't get confused. You won't be the judge of probate. Let me leave that to... And he won't be the Budget Committee member. So, and it is my practice to do this as slowly as possible. So, we start off by saying, "I..." Once I say "I," you repeat your name.
Raise your right hand.
Raising your right hand.
Yes. We haven't got a name yet. We'll get there. Chris will start off. "I..." Raise your right hand.
"I..."
"Do solemnly swear..."
"Solemnly swear."
"...that I will support..."
"That I will support."
"...enforce and abide..."
"Enforce and abide."
"...by the Constitution and laws of the United States."
"By the Constitution and laws of the United States."
"And of the State of Rhode Island."
"And of the State of Rhode Island."
"And that I will, in all respects..."
"In all respects."
"...observe the provisions of the Charter..."
"Observe the provisions of the Charter."
"...and ordinances of the Town of Tiverton."
"And ordinances of the Town of Tiverton."
"...and will faithfully discharge..."
"And will faithfully discharge."
"...the duties of..."
"Duties of..."
"...of the Town of Tiverton."
"Of the Town of Tiverton."
"So help me God."
"So help me God."
Gentlemen, thank you very much. Glenn, do you... At this time?
Okay. Madam President, I would like to call forward Deputy Chief Maltese and Lieutenant Glenn Skalvinsky, who has served as the acting chief of the Tiverton Police Force, to come forward to assist in the swearing-in ceremony and to speak a little bit about probationary patrol officer Adam Brilliant. Brilliant. I got that correct.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council office, Adam Brilliant was hired as a probationary Tiverton police officer on August 15, 2006. Prior to his employment, he worked in the private security field and obtained his Bachelor of Science degree from the Roger Williams University of Justice Studies in 2004. Upon his appointment as a Tiverton police officer, Adam Brilliant entered the Rhode Island Municipal Police Training Academy at Lincoln, Rhode Island. He graduated on December 1, 2006. Out of the 46 officers in this class, Officer Brilliant ranked number six, and his grade average was 95.2. At the present time, Officer Brilliant has completed field training on the 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM shift and is currently in field training on the midday to 8:00 AM shift. His evaluation has thus far been exemplary.
I would concur with the deputy chief. During my four weeks while serving as acting police chief for the Town of Tiverton, I have observed Officer Brilliant's performance and found him to be exemplary. I've complimented him recently on some of the activity that he's performed, and the town can be reassured that he's hiring a very competent and capable officer.
Thank you very much.
We'll do a swearing-in and then follow up with the other comments.
Okay. Would you beckon the officer so he can be sworn in? He should be with you.
I should note, Madam President, that his father is present in the audience and his girlfriend is also present in the audience. I'm here to see this.
I presume that's Officer Brilliant's girlfriend, not the father's girlfriend.
Excuse me.
Officer, would you kindly step forward? And come right over here.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm going to administer the oaths, and then you can counsel an oath just to congratulate you. Now, it's been my practice, as you have had a view of this, to do this slowly. When it comes to what your duties are, you are a probationary police officer.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So would you raise your right hand, please? And just repeat after me. "I, Adam J. Brilliant..."
"I, Adam J. Brilliant."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear."
"...that I will support..."
"That I will support."
"...enforce and abide..."
"Enforce and abide."
"...by the Constitution and laws of the United States of America..."
"By the Constitution and laws of the United States of America."
"...and of the State of Rhode Island..."
"And of the State of Rhode Island."
"...and that I will..."
"And that I will."
"...in all respects..."
"In all respects."
"...observe the provisions of the Charter..."
"Observe the provisions of the Charter."
"...and ordinances of the Town of Tiverton..."
"And ordinances of the Town of Tiverton."
"...and will faithfully discharge..."
"And will faithfully discharge."
"...the duties of a probationary police officer..."
"The duties of a probationary police officer."
"...of the Town of Tiverton."
"Of the Town of Tiverton."
"So help me God."
"So help me God."
Congratulations.
Before Lieutenant Skalvinsky leaves, I'd like to ask him to come forward for a moment. Several weeks ago, I did not know this gentleman. His name was offered to us as to take over the leadership of the Tiverton Police Department when Deputy Maltese was... Deputy Chief Maltese was called away for a family issue of having a newborn child. And I want to acknowledge the outstanding job that the lieutenant has done. I know that a number of you have commented how well things have run in the department since during his short tenure. And contrary also to what some people have noted, that there has been an upswing of state police activity in the town. It was not directly related to Lieutenant Skalvinsky being here. But he did a first-rate job. I am deeply indebted to him and the Rhode Island State Police. And I wanted it to be known publicly how strongly I feel about that. I also want to indicate to give you an understanding of an effort that Lieutenant Skalvinsky and all the men and women of the Tiverton Police Department did over a two-week holiday period, which I copied you on. Traffic citations were up 46 percent. Arrests were up 22 percent. More importantly, accidents were down 17 percent. And because of an effort to make sure our streets were safe during the New Year's holiday weekend, we also had two DUI arrests in the town. And I congratulate the men and women of the department who brought forth these numbers during Lieutenant Skalvinsky's tenure and congratulate him and the Lieutenant Jones specifically for their leadership during that time. And I think we should be proud of this department. And, you know, most importantly, our roads are safer when we get people to slow down and not drink.
Can we say amen or should we applaud?
You can applaud or amen.
I think perhaps the council should go on record in a formal acknowledgement to be sent to Colonel Curry.
It is going to be sent.
And thanking him for his assistance and appropriate resolution to that effect.
So moved.
Should be voted upon. All those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously.
It was an honor to serve. I appreciate the welcome, madam. Thank you.
We'll have nice words for you with the colonel.
Thank you, ma'am.
And now, the Conservation Commission wishes to make a presentation.
Thank you, Madam President. Tom Ramatowski, Chairman of the Commission. As you know, we initiated a program a couple of years back to award or provide awards to people in town, the volunteers, who do things that are outstanding on behalf of the environment and on behalf of conservation issues within the town. And I'm very pleased to continue that tradition now for our third year in awarding our special recognition award to Ms. Trish Sylvester. For those who aren't aware of what she's done for the town, Trish is currently the president of the Land Trust, and she's brought to that organization a new level of effectiveness in its mission to protect Tiverton's national heritage. She's largely responsible for the recent acquisition and permanent protection of the 48-acre Pereira tract in the Holly Oak Forest near Whidomo Woods in the Parton Gray Preserve, and as well as conservation easement on a 10-acre waterfront parcel. And under her leadership, the trust has raised significant amounts of private, state, and federal monies and have launched a new initiative to protect undeveloped land in Nonquid ponds greenway and organized a two-year, $2 million campaign for land protection within the Town of Tiverton. And on top of all this, she's also been a longstanding member of the Planning Board and brings these types of concerns to their reviews as well. So without any further ado, I'd like to present the award to Trish and thank her on behalf of the commission and the town for her services.
Thank you very much, the Conservation Commission, for this honor. I'm really very honored and pleased. But you know that we're all in this together, and I want to thank everybody else in the town who's helped out in the efforts to preserve open space and preserve our environment, such as the town council, the Conservation Commission, the Open Space Commission, and all the members of the Land Trust and the community, who really care about open space. So, thank you very much.
Let us just add to Mr. Ramatowski that you have chosen well. I think a number of us know the work that Trish Sylvester has done and the patience with which she has mustered in bringing acquisitions to fruition. So, congratulations to both of you. Now, before we move on to our business at hand, the council is going to make an award tonight, too. And maybe we should all stand up. This is an award for perfect attendance at a town council meeting for the year 2006. And the first recipient of the Golden Chair Award goes to Sally Black.
She's right away. She's writing. I saw you. You're right in the picture.
Now, Sally, would you kindly come forward?
She's writing away. She's going to write down the recipient.
We wanted to give you the chair, but Donald Bowlin said we needed to vote at the financial town meeting. So we did the next best thing. But we don't want you to get discouraged because there were other candidates for this. They were Alex Cody. Alex snored a little bit. So we decided that you were the appropriate... There was another candidate, but she gets paid for being at the meeting. And she takes notes on our... What we say. So she didn't get it. It just goes to you, and we hope you open it. And here's your certificate.
Now you can write it down, Sally.
I think you should open it because it will help you get through this meeting. But while you're opening it, I'm going to ask Mr. Bowlin to read the consent agenda.
Tonight's consent agenda consists of the minutes of the regular council meeting of December 11th, minutes of the regular council meeting of December 18th, executive session minutes of the council meeting December 11th, and executive session minutes of the council meeting on December 18, 2006. Receipt of minutes from the following boards and commissions: the Library Board of Trustees, Historical Cemetery Commission, Wastewater Management, Open Space, Planning Board, Recycling Commission, Cemetery Commission, Tree Committee, Conservation Commission, and Fogling Committee. Correspondence. Revenue report as of November 30th received from Town Treasurer. Report received from Town Treasurer dated December 20th regarding elementary school debt service. Report received from Town Treasurer dated December 27th regarding elementary school debt service. Town Administrator Chief Lloyd of Tiverton Fire Department requests release of carry-forward funds from 0506 budget, $2,031.02 from account 99331535, $8,087.98 from account 99331610, and $4820.53 from account 99331740, apparatus maintenance. Request transfer of released funds to current fiscal year budget account number 331740, apparatus maintenance. Town Administrator requests release of 0506 carry-forward funds, $12,444.30 from account 199333106, police longevity to account 333106, police longevity. Public... That's the end of the consent agenda.
Thank you very much. Are there any changes from the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Motion carries. The non-conforming ordinance, the remainder of it was referred to the town planner, so we are not holding a public hearing on that matter. Shall we move to the board of...
Madam President, may I suggest, just to formally deal with that, that a motion to table that might be in order?
Okay.
Why would we table it and not continue it?
Well, because we've got no place to continue it to. We're not continuing it to a date certain. We're going to end up referring it to the planner. It's going to come back. It'll be re-advertized. It should really come back as a new item. It's also continuing over from one council to the next. So I think the appropriate procedural thing is just to table this one, and when it comes back, there'll be something new. You can always actually take it up from the table. But technically, with a new council, it shouldn't really be continued. You should either be acting on it as a public hearing or you should be... You should be actually having it as a public hearing, or it should die.
So it should have just died, and it should be coming back as a whole new item.
Right. And but I think, just to make it clear, it should be on the record, whatever happened to it, a motion to table would be appropriate.
I really don't believe, because we have a change in members of the council, that items that were being discussed prior die and we bring them back up again. They're continuations of the same issue. We... All I see this issue is that, in addition to the discussion, we've added a planner who we really do want to have take a look at this. But I think if we end this thing and start it again, we push this period back a lot further than I know some of us want to see this. This thing really needs to continue and get heard as quickly as possible once the planner has taken a look at what's there and makes recommendations to us.
Motion should mean to just refer it to the town planner.
Well, if I may, that will... It will do the same thing. I'm just trying to be tidy about it. If you don't continue it to a date certain, you're going to have to re-advertise it. No ifs, ands, or buts about it. So if you're concerned about that time and so forth, then you should continue it right now to a particular date certain, whether it be February or March, but you should continue it to that date. If you just refer it to the planner, it's going to have to be re-advertized anyway. So it was with that mind of referring... Since it was being referred to the planner, I was just trying to be neat procedurally and suggest tabling it. You're right that things don't die automatically, and that's why I was suggesting a motion for the tabling.
Motion to table.
You have to second that.
All right. Was there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any...
It was actually made by Jay. No.
No.
Motion was made by Jay. Then we had a discussion. That's why it is your motion.
Okay. Now I see the administrators' hand up.
No, I think you're going to table it. If you're going to do a date certain, I would have suggested a date, so I'll just stay out of it at this point.
Fine.
Well, I'd like... Before voting on a motion to table, I'd like to hear what your date certain is.
I've already... You know, Mr. Spencer just started today, and I have asked him to... I'm looking at... It's going to take him about 60 days, frankly, to get his feet, you know, get his feet on the ground to 90 days. I've asked him to review all the tapes from all the meetings because every time this issue has been brought up, someone has brought the exception to the rule. And I really want to make sure he has or is able to address many of these exceptions to the rule so there is no surprise for you because this is a very complicated issue. You addressed the one issue which was bedeviling a number of people, and that's been cleared off the table. But this other part of it could get complicated and create other problems, unintended problems. And I think that's been the concern that some of you have had and many in the community have had. So I would like at least 60 to 90 days, preferably close to 90 days, for him to get himself settled and understand the town and understand the complexity of this issue.
Okay. The motion's been made to table. There is a second. All those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand. All those opposed to that motion. Two. I believe it's five.
So we can expect... I'm in favor of tabling it, so I vote in favor. So we can expect to see this back, like, the end of March?
End of March, early April. We will give you an update by notice to you by communication from my office or his office sometime in early March to see where we're going with this.
And the lighting also is...
The lighting issue.
Fine.
You know, street design standards for the business district, all of these things. And the Bournville were all dropped on him Friday.
There's no office.
He has about this much worth of reading material to do right now.
The motion passed 5 to 2. And moving on, the town clerk. Would you like to address that, Madam Town Clerk?
No, these are just the annual...
Motion to approve the street excavator licenses subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. We also have a request from Tiffany A. Jewelry requesting a holiday license.
Motion to grant a license subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Second.
Any further discussion?
It's a holiday license. It's replaced the Sunday license. It's a change to the law as of last year.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Now, we're moving on to some unfinished business with regard to the town finance official. My understanding of the request at our last meeting was to put before us the qualifications for the job.
We are asking... Mr. Amorantis and I are asking that this be continued to the next meeting.
Do you want us to take a look at this draft advertisement for temporary full-time treasurer?
I would like... You can take a look at it, but I would really like this to be discussed in the January 22nd meeting because I think there's going to be some changes to that.
Motion to continue to the January 22nd meeting.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Town clerk?
Oh, that is...
Did you just distribute the evaluation forms?
Distribution, right.
There you go. Go ahead.
There you go. Go ahead.
I did distribute them before the meeting. I did anything with track, so it's in red. If I changed anything or added by combining those two evaluation forms you were given. So I thought you could just review them, get back to me. You want to delete, you want to add, you want to change. If you just get back to me, I will then compile whatever other suggestions you have and distribute it for the next meeting.
Okay. So, Deanne.
Can we continue this?
Yes. With the request, though, that, I guess the town clerk would like any comments prior to the next meeting, so she'll co-late the comments and get back to us. And that's your motion?
That's my motion.
That's your motion?
Rose.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, thank you. Motion carries. Okay. Unanimously. New business, Councilor Aruda?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I was just looking for an update to the request of the impact fee study that Mr. Steckman was working on with Mr. Shumun. I've seen that you have backed that up with the memo, but I just ask Mr. Steckman if you could just briefly describe, you know, mention what you have said in the memo.
Mr. Shumun, obviously, this impact fee is more complicated. It is simply not, you know, when people hear of an impact fee, they think, well, we're going to build new schools, and it's $34 million. We're seeking to raise $34 million. What we're trying to determine right now, and we've been working with the school department as we finalize this, is what is actually due to replacement because of the age of the buildings versus expansion because of growth. It is the same issue that we're working with the library, possibly talking about a fire station and trying to get an understanding what technically would be covered in terms of the amount of money, and then be able to come back to you with a recommended fee. And Mr. Shumun was away part of December, where he goes to England, and he just got back. So we will be working on it in the next couple of weeks. Andy's got to work on putting the language together, the legal language. So our target date is late February, early March, to have something for you to at least discuss in a workshop format, so that we can go to public hearing, obviously, because it would be an ordinance change.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
And we're also, just so you know, we're still working on the capital budget anyway, along with we have a facilities budget and a capital equipment budget, which are two separate budgets.
Thank you. The town clerk has circulated a proposed meeting schedule for 2007, which, basically, what she has done is schedule a workshop on every month that has five Mondays in it. We have workshops.
Many of them.
Many of them, yes. And of course, they can always, if there is nothing, they can be canceled, but right now...
There's only four.
One, two, three, four, five.
Four.
Not bad. She likes us to meet with us anyway, so. Anyway, that should be circulated, and I, is any comment on that? Yes?
We have one scheduled for this Wednesday, correct?
Yes.
Is there the update? That's the one on...
Budget.
For this week, that's yours. And do you have an update for us? That was one that we scheduled, providing you would have an update from, and that's from two weeks ago. Do you have an update for us?
I sent a letter to the school board. They could not meet this week. The letter was sent to them on the 14th.
The one we were looking at for the school board was for the 16th or the 17th.
16th. I have sent them a letter asking for their comment. It was faxed last week. As of right now, as of today, I've not heard from the school board whether that's acceptable or not. I suspect they will be voting on this or considering this tomorrow night at their meeting, and I will then let you know on Wednesday if that's okay with you.
Okay, but I'm saying the one for Wednesday is with us, with you.
Correct.
And I want to know if you have any changes for us, for your workshop for Wednesday.
We will, and I will, those will be hand-delivered to you by tomorrow. There's nothing substantial, it's just a couple corrections and typos that we have found in the document that we want.
And the reason why I'm asking that, and the other reason why I'm asking is, is there a substantial difference in the numbers that, and not that I'm looking to postpone anything, but is there, if there's not a substantial difference in that workshop that we've been scheduled for Wednesday night, then why have it? That's the other reason why I'm asking that. You know, compared to the one that we had three weeks ago, and if there hasn't been a substantial difference, then why are we going to continue to have it? You know, we were tentative, we're going to have one on the 17th or the 16th with the school department, and we had one with you three weeks ago, and if we haven't got any real changes for them, why have one this Wednesday if we don't have any changes?
Wasn't the meeting Wednesday to basically give our approval so that he can forward it to the budget committee, isn't that...
Yeah. I don't, we didn't really have an in-depth kind of question period.
Correct.
It was done as part of, you know, there are a whole lot of capital expenditure, and this, quite frankly, there was no backup to those as we've had in the past. And even if we spend a little period of time understanding what the requests are, we know what the contracts are, but a lot of the capital expense, I think, needs some fleshing out. Is that fair?
And that's what I thought the meeting on the 10th was going to be about.
Okay.
You know, it gives the department heads an opportunity to explain anything. You've correctly asked them any questions in regards to these matters. Obviously, a lot of this is contractual, and some departments, there's little to no change, but we give you an opportunity to talk to you, to us, for us to talk to you about it.
Okay. See, and we're discussing the schedule. I noticed in this schedule that we're taking meetings from the holiday and moving them back on Monday rather than just having them on the Tuesday following the holiday?
Yes.
Yes. You can change what it is.
It is a noticeable difference from the way we've operated in the past, and I'm just wondering where it came from.
It came from me.
Okay. Thank you.
I had my hand up before Glenn, but he was answering the question, because I wanted to explain it. The problem is, if you move them automatically to the Tuesdays, it creates an automatic conflict as far as with me, with other meetings that I have on certain Tuesdays, particularly the second Tuesday of the month, I often have a conflict there. Now, we have other people in the firm, including Jeannie, who's been here, and other people who can cover, but I try to minimize that, save that for unavoidable conflicts rather than pre-scheduling it. It also, I thought, might work out better for the council if you know, you know, Monday nights are the council nights for the most part. I'm sure there'll be some other nights' meetings with budget workshops and so forth, but in general, you'll know, if you're on the council, keep your Monday nights free, and rather than have it jump around from the Monday to Tuesday. That's why we suggested it. And then in the course of it, we noticed about the fifth Mondays, there's been some talk about trying to schedule a regular workshop.
I didn't have a problem with the fifth Mondays. My problem with changing the meetings when we have the holiday is in May, we're going to have meetings a week apart, in August, a week apart, in November and December, a week apart. And I think sometimes that the period doesn't allow for, you know, so then we get the three-week period, you know, between our other meetings. So we're having a meeting on a Monday, and we've got an agenda closing on Thursday. And that's going to happen in every one of those months. And I mean, I just, that's why I was, I understand your scheduling, you know, dilemma when we move to a Tuesday, because some councils meet on Tuesdays, and that's their regular night. They're not bothered by holidays.
When you're looking, if you could jump in for a second?
Yeah.
When you're looking at, just what Don's talking about, right now, looking at May, if you're going from May 14 to June 11, you're talking...
No, May 14 to May 21, I'm sorry.
But if you're looking, you know, by the time you're done, you're talking at the end of the fiscal, you know, towards the end of the fiscal year, and we're starting to scramble, start scrambling stuff in now.
Well, the 21st to the 11th, we're going to have those big three-week periods, you know. Every time we cut one down to a week period, we end up with a three-week period. And, you know, if everyone thinks that it's going to work okay, I just see these things, you know, and that two-week period sometimes seems to be the right amount of time for things to develop. And we find that we have some meetings, you know, that are jammed, you know, as we're going to get into some ordinance stuff and things like that. And then when you take a three-week period in between, it's not, sometimes our agendas get very overwhelming in those periods.
That is very, very true, because you find that things pile up, and they have piled up a lot without attention. So your point, I think, is well taken. So it's a lovely schedule. And those blue and red, maybe John's point is...
That's why we wanted to bring it forward.
Would you like me to change those to just the Tuesdays?
Yeah, and then we will work on...
December's always one, December's always one that, we play that by year around the holiday. We ended up not having a second meeting in December, and that works fine sometimes.
We moved it up this year.
Okay. So should we go back to the original...
Tuesday after holiday.
Tuesday after holiday, and we'll make sure that we don't stumble by not having you here.
Okay.
And the workshops will be made on Tuesday?
Can't guarantee that.
I think we should schedule the workshops as necessary. We're scheduling a workshop in December, you know, where, let's see where the last one is. Workshops are in blue. You know, I mean, we've got a workshop scheduled for October the 29th. We may not need it.
Yeah, we don't have it. I like the idea, I like the idea of having them on that fifth, on the extra Monday. I just like the idea, rather than if we start off the year by considering that, we're not scrambling where we get here at a meeting and go, okay, what's going to work for everybody? You know, yeah, this is, I mean, I think if you're worried about a workshop in October, in January, I think, I don't think everyone's got the date taken care of yet.
That's what I'm saying. Why should we approve a schedule to have a workshop on that day?
Let's give the guidance to the town clerk to revise the schedule so that it wouldn't be a Tuesday.
I like the idea workshops we always need. Madam President.
Always on the front.
I think the effort in all of this is, obviously, the workshops can be canceled, but at least it allows us to let people know that, to block the time, to think that they're going to be going away for meetings, and they, you know, for all of us, even the staff, to block these times out so that we can minimize the number of times we schedule our vacations just so we don't, you know, find myself away, or one of the other department heads find themselves away. It just allows us, everybody to plan out their lives a little bit better.
Okay. So the town clerk appropriately guided.
Yes.
Okay.
We're going to leave December 17.
Yes, they can change that then.
We can, I mean, you know, this is a projected schedule.
Yeah, just take it right out of the blue, even the way it's going.
Okay. Moving on.
Nice job, Nancy.
You've got to get us organized yet, Nancy.
She will. Nice job.
That's to change. Okay, town clerk, the appointment of deputy town clerk.
This is a request to allow the deputy clerk, allow a position for deputy clerk. Now, in most cases, the deputy clerks are separate employees, usually non-union. In the case of Tivon, we don't really need at this point another person or body in there. But I do have only union workers in that department, so this could take some little negotiating with the union. I think Mr. Steckman might have to carry the ball from here. The charter stipulates I shall have one, and I have to tell you, you do need one, because someone should be there to sign when I'm not there. And it's not only for that, there's other, when we did change the clerk from a part-time, a position in there from part-time to full-time, that did pick up a lot of the slack, but it doesn't really have the description to match it, and it's difficult to do because they're all union employees. So what I'd like to do is have one of the union employees, if Mr. Steckman can arrange it with the union through some, hopefully not major negotiations or a simple amendment, that we would just be able to extend some duties to one of the existing clerks, kind of, even if it has to be kind of an overtime-type thing, because probate, municipal court, things like that, I do need somebody there when I'm not there. Right now, if the clerk is not in the office and someone comes in to pay a municipal court bill, no one takes it.
Madam President?
Yep.
And the budget has always had a position called supervising clerk. That was always reserved for the deputy town clerk. The deputy town clerk was a supervising clerk. For some reason, they objected to putting in the words deputy clerk or something, and we just retained the supervisory clerk.
Well, the contract makes no stipulation to a deputy clerk, but the general laws do stipulate, and much like the finance, the deputy treasurer, the deputy clerk is, the clerk has responsibility of that deputy clerk. You have to have someone actually being able to have the authority you have when you're not there, and it usually runs with the elected position. So in other words, whoever I would appoint, and the clerk can revoke the appointments, if I were no longer clerk, that person would no longer be deputy clerk. And that's in the general law. Charter also stipulates that we shall have one, and a town this size, we really do need it. So I would like to see if Mr. Steckman would please see where he can go with this, maybe to help with a solicitor in.
Well, I think we also should look at what our practice has been. We've had deputy clerks in the past, you know, with the same union agreement that's there. So if the union's saying there's a problem, why wasn't it a problem, you know, in the past? If the supervisory clerk in that department has been the deputy clerk, and that's a practice that has taken place, we may be able to institute the position in the same manner as a practice that's been being carried forward by the town with that same collective bargaining agreement.
Apparently, that has not always been the practice in talking with the union briefly today.
Your conversation also should be with Mr. Costa, who served in the position for a number of years, to see what his position is on that, because the union sometimes, you know, his recollection is somewhat different than what management's might be.
I think it's also, I think it's also to recognize that the reason the title of supervising clerk is not a title that is gained on a merit, it is gained on longevity. That does not mean that the person that is in that position may be the most highly skilled in that position at any time. It's simply longevity. And, you know, it's very possible that someone could transfer from one division to another into that division through the opportunity to bid on positions, and ultimately, we're going to throw that individual in as a supervising clerk. You know, that's part of the problems with some of the titles that we've used with some of these positions, they really are not, the title doesn't match what the job really means. And it's different, it may have been different when Counselor Costa was in that position, and right now, we have had an illness where we have somebody filling that position on a temporary basis. So I have no problem sitting down with Counselor Costa, especially with his knowledge on the position, his length of tenure, and trying to resolve this. But I think in fairness to where the town clerk was trying to go, is at least as we do this, to have the option of talking with the union during this period of time, and, you know, kind of feeling out where they would like to go, and so we can come back with a recommendation that this just does not continue, because it does create a burden. It almost means that Nancy, frankly, can almost never leave her office, and that may be not a great thing, because I hardly ever get a chance out of my office, so she should share the pain, but I'm not so sure that's the best way it should work.
I think the question came out with that schedule.
Well, would it be in order to at least approve the concept of having a town clerk subject to the consultation?
Motion to approve, subject to the consultation with the union and establishment of whatever needs to be established for the position.
Any further discussion?
Madam President, I just have one more comment on this. In the general law, just much like the finance director, the clerk is going to be responsible for the conduct of the deputy clerk, which is why, especially in an elected position, you need to have the confidence that the person you have at your right side and signing you off on the authority that you have is in fact, you're comfortable with that. That really will play into the contract as far as union positions feeling that that, you know, could fill into there. But I'm sure Mr. Steckman will handle that with his negotiations. Thank you.
Can I just add one final comment? I think the supervisory clerk being the deputy clerk has been there for 100 years. There is that one deficiency in that, to remove the deputy clerk would be an adversarial action, and you'd have legal problems, but we never, somehow, they always get around that, probably by getting around whoever is the deputy town clerk. I inherited a town clerk, a deputy, when I was elected, and that person stayed as long as I was there, until the person retired, and I had enough to appoint a new one. But it's been, it's been the way, there are problems with it, you know, as I say, trying to, at a time like this, there is a problem.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, raise your right hand, please. Motion carries unanimously. Now we will move to the crosswalk issue.
Yes. I'd ask Mr. Webster to come forward. As you're well aware, Main Road north of where the bridge is being rebuilt is scheduled to be repaved in the future. As part of this discussion began with David and the Riddock in regards to the location of the existing crosswalks and what the town wants to do, it turns out that only one of these crosswalks was frankly ever formally approved by the State Traffic Commission, and that one was up at, trying to read my own notes here real quick. Well, you had one there, and then we also, should be done for Pecasa School and the existing crosswalk at Cananica Street, and request an additional crosswalk for the northern part of Cananica Street and Main Road. Now, the other four crosswalks also include one over at Justin Street, which through the memos, also serves Holy Ghost Church and Services, the community center. The other one is where I believe a school bus location is, because I know I've seen it there, a school bus stopped there at Hambley Road. And the only problem with that is, there is an existing flashing sign there that's a dangerous intersection, so we should at least have flashing signs there that there's a crosswalk. Apparently, there has been some problems in the past there, but it has to go back a number of years, because that flashing sign is a little aged. And then the last two is at Hoover and Hilton Streets. You know, it's firmly at your discretion whether to maintain the existing seven, amend them. We're just seeking some guidance versus us just making a unilateral decision.
I think that probably if we went back and searched the minutes, we'll probably find there was good cause for all of them. I'd like to make a recommendation that we seek the State Traffic Commission's approval of all of the existing crosswalks to be maintained when the road is repaved.
Okay.
The only question I have on that is, there may be, but it's the kind of issue that I would almost leave to the police and the Public Works Department as to appropriateness, need, et cetera. I mean, for us to go, what are we going to do? Look at the crosswalks and, it just seems to me a public safety issue that really...
The ones that are there, if they want additional ones, fine, but I'm thinking that we're finding out that the State Traffic Commission... we're finding out that the State Traffic Commission has only approved one of these. What the request that I'm seeing before me is that we request the State Traffic Commission to accept the other six, to have all seven that are there be part of the state system for crosswalks so that they will come and paint them and maintain them, because they're going to tell us if they're not in the, in the State Traffic Commission's list, they're not going to come down and repaint them for us or maintain us.
Or if they're not in their budget, which was an issue last year on one of these, apparently there was, it was not a budgeted item, and they would not do it. And, you know, RIDOC is always experiencing budget cuts, so they're less inclined to do that. The only thing that I would keep in mind, there will need to be probably, for safety reasons, additional, potential additional streetlights or definitely moving of streetlights. We don't know what the cost of a movement of a streetlight would be. It should be nominal, if anything, but there may be some additional cost. The only thing, and David can speak to it himself, the only thing I've always been advised, the rule of thumb is, the more crosswalks you have, the more expectations of safety that you, you raise with pedestrians, because they think they can automatically just walk out and traffic is going to stop. That's the only problem with marked crosswalks. But we're just seeking some direction. I mean, I know Mr. Webster and I agree, I think, four out of five, I think the two that we have some question on together is Hooper and Hilton Street.
I think the reason for the crosswalks in the north end of town especially is those areas have a larger amount of pedestrian traffic, especially elderly in, in those neighborhoods. I'm, I'm in favor of maintaining the ones we have. People should have an understanding that when people, you know, that's where you're supposed to cross, that is supposed to be the safe zone, you know, to cross a main road like that, and there needs to be, you know, a sufficient number in, on that stretch of road. And that's why my motion is to request all of the ones that currently exist to be maintained.
I would also say, if you wish that, that you might want to add the northern crosswork, crosswalk at Cananaca Street, which is not there and really should be there.
Okay. With that, the additional one, then, Mr. Steckman.
I'll amend my second.
Second.
Yeah, Paul made it.
My second.
Yes, that's why we were discussing.
Motion is seconded. Okay. Anybody else? Mr. Webster.
Just to correct a couple of things. The reason we're going through this is the road will be resurfaced. As it currently stands, only one crosswalk will be remarked. So it's not a case of remarking as maintenance, it's a case of remarking when the repaving is done. Okay? Second thing is that this will not be presented directly to the State Traffic Commission. This will be presented to Rhode Island DOT in accordance with a, an email that I, that I received from DOT, and they will present it to the State Traffic Commission. They will be analyzing each of the locations for conformance to the, the, what they refer to as the warrants for, for the need for the crosswalk. I believe you'll find that will be in conformance with the backup that was provided to you with the memo.
Besides what Mr. Steckman mentioned about not adding too many or possibly giving the illusion of safety, what is the rationale behind wanting to have fewer of them? Why would the state want fewer of them? Is it simply a maintenance issue?
Well, you also, it's like having too many signs. When you have too many of anything, people tend to ignore those. If you put up, you know, 10, 20 mile an hour signs, people, you know, tend to ignore it. You know, one is usually, one or two are sufficient, depending on the stretch of the road. Any signage that you put up or any pavement markings, you just don't want to go out there and, and go overboard with it. You don't want to put a crosswalk at every intersection if it's not justified, if you don't have pedestrians crossing that.
Do we have anything to base on how much these are used, or?
We have no pedestrian counts. I, I'm not aware of any, any pedestrian counts anywhere in the state, even with DOT.
But I mean, even just from, from what people are saying, are there any that are particularly looked at as being, not, maybe not as-
I, I think Mr. Boland's probably correct. They were probably put there for, for a reason in the past. However, you know, some, some of the reasons, like the school now, we, we do have the community center, but it is, it's, it's kind of no longer, there's not a lot of pedestrian traffic down to that building. However, you know, the reason for the memo is just to ensure that everybody's on board with what, what crosswalks are, are wanted and needed, and then we'll leave it up to State Traffic Commission for the justification.
And as of now, only that one is going to be striped?
That is only one.
We're requesting that the others continue to be.
That's your motion, I believe, yes?
Okay. Am I right that Pecassa, under this proposal of retaining it, and I don't want to prolong this, but there would be a crosswalk at every street?
No.
No.
Pecassa, Hilton?
Each, each of the ones that's listed in my memo of December 12th.
Yeah, okay.
There would be a crosswalk at each one of those intersections and with the addition of an, an additional one at Cananaca Street, because there should be a crosswalk on each side of the signalized intersection.
You're looking at the twelve. Okay, I was looking at Mr. Steckman's cover memo.
It, it follows the same rationale as Mr. Webster's.
I thought, retaining a crosswalk at Judson Street. We have one at Cananaca.
The other one at Cananaca is just because there's a light, and as stated, there should be one on either side.
And the other is Hooper Street and Hilton Street.
Yeah.
Those are the only two that, you know, other than what Mr. Boland has said, would probably be justification while they were there. And also, I indicated that is a higher-density population area. You know, some communities use crosswalks, I have found, and have them, have a little bit raised in the, you know, impressions put into the asphalt or actually brick to create a calming effect that way. There's a lot of reasons and ways to use, to use crosswalks. My only concern is, I agree with Dave, the more you have them, the less impact, or the more people are comfortable just walking out and someone could, could be hit. That is a road that does have 25 to 30 mile an hour speeds on.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Okay, moving on to the RFP for lawn maintenance. We have before us, they propose RFP for lawn care services.
This is my memo, is a three-year agreement. It is modeled after the two previous agreements, that the first year is bid on, the second subsequent two years are annual bids. The difference that I put into this, to this RFP is where in the past, it was the town administrator approving and negotiating the increase. While I would still be negotiating, if there is, need to be an increase, it would be, it would come with your approval and knowledge. We also, because of the problems of the long-term and very generous relationship Mr. McKeo has had, we wanted to make sure we had everything in there that Mr. McKeo was providing, because this seemed to be a problem, that there were a lot of services that he was providing that we weren't accounting for. And in case that we, he should be outbid for some reason, I don't want to find the town or commissions coming to me and saying, hey, look, this guy's not doing this, where it was something done by Mr. McKeo brought us. And it took us a little longer to get this done than we had thought to track down exactly what was being done, in fairness to all bidders.
Okay. Is there any motion on this?
Motion.
Motion has been made to advertise the RFP.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I, you know.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Moving on to the next item. Which is a request to waive the bid process for the stormwater reports. So it's $500 more than the, I want to speak to this.
I'll make a motion to waive the bid.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second. No, he can.
Mr. Webster, do you wish to speak to this?
I think the memo does say it all. The, the proposal that we have, the written proposal is for $3,000. There is the additional $450 for the appearance. It's a council meeting that I believe is a necessary thing, because that will serve as the public hearing for our stormor, our annual report.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Webster. Town Administrator, announcements.
Well, we have a personal, a housekeeping measure with the council. I know you all have very busy social calendars, but there, the trust is, interlocal trust is having a dinner on the other side of the state almost. We're not doing overnight, it's just over and back.
This is wrong.
I know, I've heard. 10 minutes back of lunch, 15 minutes overnight back, that's what I've been told.
I wish so.
Yeah. I have Mr. Edwards, Mr. Carroll, and Mrs. Aruda right now. Does anybody else wish to, so we can finalize?
Yes, I'm going with, with Don.
That's the 17th?
17th. You two. Okay. So it's Mr. Edwards, Mr. Carroll, Mrs. Aruda, Mr. Boland, and Mr. Costa, and I believe we're making reservations for Mrs. Black also, so she can maintain her perfect attendance.
It can't be held without her.
Okay. Six.
I just caution you not to talk about any official business while you're there.
Not a problem.
Okay.
Okay. Also, at your next meeting, we're going to need either the reappointment or a, a new appointment to the Pension Commission where one council member serves to fill that position. Mr. Boland has filled that position for you, I guess, for the last six months, so for you all to think who wants to spend their second Tuesday of the month at 9 o'clock with the other members of the committee. For a public service note, and it's already been noted, noted on the door, and it's been up for over a week now, a couple of weeks, on Friday, January 12th, the Tax Assessor's Office will be closed for administrative purposes. This is going to allow all those in the office to go out for training, off-site training. Also, Christmas tree collector-